5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers City Hall. If you'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Do roll call.
Graham Murray.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
All right. First off, we have some proclamations.
I have a proclamation, whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at all other levels. And whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendering equal services to all, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of the local governments and community. And whereas the municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerks through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerks, now therefore it be resolved, we, the city council of the city of Burlington, Iowa, do recognize the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Kathleen P. Salisbury and to all the municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Signed and sealed the 7th day of May, 2018. Shane M. McCamp.
I was just going to say, on behalf of the deputy city clerk and myself, we just would like to thank you for proclaiming Municipal Clerks Week. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Your honor, I have a proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, excuse me, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, and emergency physicians, and emergency dispatchers, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services team engage in thousands of hours specialized training and continuing education to enhance life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now therefore, we as the city council of the city of Burlington, Iowa, do proclaim May 20 through 26, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong, Stronger Together, and we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed and sealed this 7th day of May, 2018. Shane M. McCamp. Battalion Chief, Bonner Church?
As you said, the theme for 2018 is EMS Strong, Stronger Together. Just want to let you know for that week, it'll be the 20 through the 26th. Monday's theme is education. Tuesday is safety. Wednesday is EMS for Children Day. Thursday is Save a Life, which includes CPR and Stop the Bleed Program. And Friday is EMS Recognition Day. So keep an eye on the social media page that we have. We're going to try to keep that up to date that week, and we'll keep it up every day and let you know what's going on, what we're doing in the community, as well as the county. So just give you a little history on EMS Week. If you have a few minutes, that's okay. The American College of Emergency Physicians was instrumental in establishing EMS Week back in 1974. Gerald Ford did that. And that was the first National Emergency Medical Services Week. And this annual disturbance continued in 1992. The EMS Week was moved to be the third week in May. It's been that way ever since. Emergency medical calls make up the bulk of our services to the community. As the primary provider of 911 ambulance response in the city, as well as parts of the county in Illinois, we get an intimate view into the lives of the citizens we serve. We are a highly trusted group of men and women whose sole purpose is to serve the community in the capacity of firefighter and medical service provider. We appreciate the trust that our community has in us, and while there are plenty of exciting moments we have on the fire ground or rescue scenes that usually make for the exciting news that you see, it's really the everyday calls that we go on that make the biggest impact on the lives of our citizens. I am humbled and honored to be a part of the organization that has, at its core, the best group of highly trained public servants that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. We are honored to have the city of Burlington recognize the week of May 20 through the 26, 2018, as EMS Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor, I have a proclamation. Whereas home rule is essential to effective and responsive municipal governance in Iowa and provides flexibility to make decisions at the local level, where decisions are made closest to the people they impact and can be tailored to fit local conditions, needs, and concerns in order to better serve taxpayers. And whereas the city of Burlington, Iowa supports home rule and the powers it provides to make local decisions that best reflect the residents of our community. And whereas the citizens of Iowa approved the adoption of home rule in the Constitution of Iowa on November 5, 1968, and whereas it is the 50th year of municipal home rule in Iowa, home rule continues to be vital to the health prosperity of all cities in Iowa. And now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of municipal home rule in Burlington, Iowa, and we proudly support its continued authority. Signed and sealed the 7th day of May, 2018. Sign, Shane McCamp, Mayor.
All right. Next, we have our consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda having been discussed or considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There is no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have two resolutions. The first is a resolution supporting the application for the REEP/CEP grant to provide conservation-related interpretive signage at the outdoor classroom in Crapo Park. The second resolution is a resolution approving the 28E agreement for mutual aid fire protection for Des Moines County Fire Rescue Services. Then we have four set dates for public hearings on May 21, 2018. The first is a consideration of an ordinance repealing Chapter 122 Peddlers, Solicitors, and Transient Merchants and creating a new Chapter 122 Peddlers, Solicitors, Mobile Food Vendors, and Transient Merchants. The second is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 232 South Sixth Street, city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The third is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. And the fourth is a consideration of fiscal year 2017/2018 budget amendment number one. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like any of these items removed? I see none. Counsel?
None.
I'm moved to approve all items listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right, it's moved in seconds. Vote on it.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
All right. And next, we have a presentation, the Alliant Annual Report. Nancy here.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Snod. I'm an account manager with Alliant Energy. We have an operating center on Roosevelt Road. We also have a generation plant on Sullivan Slough. And I like to appear before council about once a year, and I like to see Mr. Farnell on a little more regular basis than that, as needed. And this, just really appreciate the time, and I'd like to just share with you some updates. Our Burlington operations employs approximately 47 people from Burlington and the surrounding area. We also have our generation station, and that employs about 37 people from Burlington and the surrounding area. And some of the ways that we support the community is through our Alliant Energy Foundation with donations to 501(c)(3) organizations, and we also support sponsorships to other types of organizations. And some of the recipients this year of that support have been Transitions of Des Moines County with a safety grant and also a transitional housing grant. We also supported Young House Family Services and the Southeastern Community College Foundation with their Chad Youth Program. Sunnyside Elementary School got a sponsorship for a movie premiere. We also had a donation to Burlington Steamboat Days and donation in the form of scholarships for a Kid Tech Summer Program with emphasis on STEM Festival at Southeastern Community College. And the donations and grants this year totaled just about $11,000 in the last year. And I always like to say, the people that get the money are the ones that take the time to fill out the paperwork. So I like to, you know, send out proactive emails and let people know when the application windows are open. The next grant cycle will open for applications on August 1st. And again, it is qualifying 501(c)(3)'s municipal organizations and schools. So we focus on family, education, and environment. Another way that we support the environment is through our tree planting program. And the participation in Des Moines County in 2017 was pretty impressive. We did 72 trees with a value of $5,400 to plant in the right-of-way in Burlington. And I think some of that was to address the Emerald Ash Borer situation to try to reforest those areas. And then at Southeastern Community College, we had an event where we planted 56 trees, and the value of those trees was just under $10,000. And that was to help beautify their new campus with the new medical building that they put up. So that was a really great project. We also support with economic development in Burlington, and we participate with Grow Greater Burlington, Southeast Iowa Regional Economic Development. And I do a lot of work with Jason Hutchison and his team over there. And of course, our primary work in the community is for the electric and gas. The infrastructure investments in Burlington for 2017 were about $647,000. We also invested in our gas system, about $365,000. And we also try to engage with our residential, commercial, and industrial customers with energy efficiency programs. I'd like to compliment, the city as well has done a really good job engaging with our energy efficiency programs. And today, I got a check, and this is for the city of Burlington wastewater treatment facility. It's the second check they're getting this year for LEDs. I called Don Fitting, and I said, "Don, would you like to come to the council meeting with me tonight and have me present you this check?" And he said, "No, Nancy, I trust this is something you can manage yourself." So on behalf of Don Fitting, I have an $873 check. Mr. Farnell, should I give that to you?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I just happen to be the queen of good timing. As I turned my phone off, I checked at the end of the day, I got a message from Mr. Hines at Carly Nelson, and he told me that the install of most of the lighting for the newly remodeled police station is ready to go, so we just need to verify that. And there's a little bit of paperwork, but we estimated that rebate for the remodel was going to be just around $12,500. So we'll see where that comes in, but that'll be the next check I'm bringing over here. So that's just around the corner, and that's going to be a really nice project. I am doing some work with Rhonda at the library. She's taking a look at some opportunities to do some lights. And we have really had a nice engagement with the city on some of the opportunities to do audits. And just recently, we've done an audit at the Public Works Building at the Water Department, and we did an audit at the pool last November. So, oh, I know what I forgot to read. The energy efficiency program involvement in 2017, we had 2,222 rebates in this area, and the incentive payout was $913,000. So very good for the community to be submitting. And I think because we serve both the electric and the gas is why we've got such robust participation. And you've got some good contractors, too, that make sure that their customers are engaging as well. And lastly, I'd like to share our property taxes for fiscal year 2017. In the city of Burlington, our taxes paid were $414,047. And then in Des Moines County, it was $1,833,718. So with that, does anybody have any questions for me?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it.
Thanks for the check.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance creating Chapter 163(a) Junk Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa.
This section somewhat tags along with the section below, update to 163 Environmental Nuisances. This is creating a new section of code specifically for junk vehicles. So it pulls out the requirements under environmental nuisance and puts it in its own section of code. Part of that was to clearly lay out the abatement process, which wasn't clearly defined under the nuisance code, as well as specify some more definitions of what constitutes a junk vehicle. So this applies to junk vehicles, inoperable or obsolete vehicles, abandoned vehicles. And for nuisance, this is only for those vehicles on private property. Lays out the process for notice to abate, which is notifying and writing the owner of the property and owner of the vehicle if known that the vehicle constitutes a nuisance and they have specified time period to remove the vehicle, or if it's not licensed or tagged or not operable, give that vehicle license, tag, and operable. So this section is a new section of code, but it's not a new section to our city code. It's just expanding on and trying to make it more clear what the requirements are for junk vehicles.
Do we have any questions or concerns in the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None.
Good.
Nope, we're good.
Your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Second. Either one.
Yeah. Second. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Graham Murray.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Your honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of the ordinance creating Chapter 163(a) Junk Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa.
My second.
Move in second. Go ahead and vote on it.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Got some ordinances next.
Your honor, I have preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 163 Environmental Nuisances of the Code of the Ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa.
Eric, did you want to summarize what the ordinance is, and are there some potential amendments to be considered?
So this second reading, staff to review of our nuisance code along with our attorneys to see if the updates or changes need to be made to ensure we're following proper standards and laws, as well as seeing how our abatement process and notification processes being handled and if that follows proper standards and laws as well. So this was, I guess, a few-month process of going through the code, examining other city codes, and seeing how can we do things in an efficient manner, how can we make sure we're doing things properly, are there changes we need to be making to a code in order to do that. So a lot of the code changes are essentially updates to include language from a legal standpoint, making sure we're covering all our bases, what we're doing follows state code, and what we're doing follows the laws that are applicable to that. And then our notice process is kind of a big one. Are we doing things in an efficient manner, or do we need to make changes to our code to allow us to do things more efficiently? So a couple changes there were made. One is making sure our nuisance notice to abate language is proper, the right to appeal, what right to a hearing, an emergency abatement. And then the primary one was the notice by publication, and this allows for certain minor nuisances such as trash, or minor junk, or tall grass to be given notice by publication, having a yearly publication in the newspaper that these are nuisance and need to be taken care of by property owners, but also having that same placard that we're doing now on the property. So under the previous, or the presented section of code to council previously, it said, "No further notice shall be required. However, the code official may post notice upon the property." Upon council discussion and review, we have suggested change that removes the section that says no further notice shall be required, but instead says that the code official shall furthermore post additional notice upon the property or provide such additional notice as the code official needs appropriate. So we'll continue to do what we normally do as far as placeting properties, giving that notice through the placard on the property that there is a nuisance violation. But this follows our code, what we're doing then follows legally what we should be doing by code. This, again, doesn't apply to all nuisances. It applies primarily to the tall grass, the trash, the minor junk. If there's larger instances, we still have to go through that normal notification certified mail or personal delivery process. So this is trying to speed up the process for getting things accomplished that we see quite a bit, especially right now, we're seeing a lot of tall grass out there, the ones that gets to be eight inches. We can give the placard and give them appropriate timeframe to get addressed, but we don't have to try and, I guess, go through the lengthy time process of a certified mail, where if they don't accept it, it might be two weeks later, and now the grass is a foot and a half, and we're getting calls on why isn't this getting done technically. So that was really kind of the aim of this for this, is trying to get things done in a timely manner where council or staff or neighbors aren't complaining, "Why aren't we doing something?" Instead of going through the process that might take two or three weeks, this can accomplish that in three weeks or maybe through that notice process. So that's one change that is being recommended for amendment. Second one is right of entry for inspection, mirroring the language a little more closely in our other sections of city code where the entry is based upon appearance of a nuisance or a condition that makes a building or premise unsafe. So unless there's a condition that appears to be unsafe, then we wouldn't initiate that right of entry for inspection. But if there is a building where it appears that it is a nuisance and creating an unsafe condition, say a roof is clearly from the property failing, and we have concerns or there's structural damage, we would request entry by the owner. They do not have to give entry, and then we have to allow 24 hours written notice of the official's intention to inspect. If they deny entry or consent for entry, then we still have to get the normal process. Now, this section of code was never written or intended that we can just go in someone's property without notification or anything like that. We still have to give that written notice and 24-hour notice, but they can still deny it. We have to show probable cause why we want entry, that there is some unsafe condition on the property to get a warrant to do that. And that is very imperfectly used. We've, in the last 10 years that I've been here, I've been here longer, but we've used that once, and the owner granted us entry based on our notice that there was some fear of, let's say, a condition of foundation settling. Went through the property with him, we gave him an inspection report and timeframe applied, and that's what occurred with that. It's not something we do lightly or try and enter someone's property. It needs to be a condition that warrants it. That was the second one, but changing that to state that it does have to be a building or premise that's unsafe as defined by the code ordinances. And then the third change that was recommended for amendment, just better defining under Section 11 of 16303, where it talks about keeping the junk or refuse. It does talk about, I don't know if you're here, bricks, rocks, clippings. Just clarifying that this is not applying to mulch or compost or clippings that are used in an efficient manner, such as for gardens or on flowers or different things. It's more in areas where you're just storing a minor property that's collecting or attracting vermin or pests or something like that. So just making sure it's clear what that applies to. So those are the three recommended amendments.
Have any comments or questions from the audience? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Wilson. I own Wilson Rentals, too. I do have a couple of, I guess, questions pertaining the notification of, he stated, Shane stated, that tall grass and garbage, that'll be put in the newspaper and let people know that's an issue, that would be an abatement issue. When people tag houses, and I'm assuming, as he stated, that's still going to happen, that's what I understood. So sometimes houses may be empty, someone moved out. So when it's just tagged on a house, the homeowner doesn't know whether the homeowner is a landlord, whether it's a homeowner who is out of town for a couple days. Doing the certified mail, that's how I have to certify notices given to people, that is a four-day turnaround. Once you mail it in four days, the law considers the tenant receiving it, whether they've received it or not. But I do have an issue with that on the fact that I cannot drive by every property every day to make sure there's not a tag on the door or to check the lawn. I can do that weekly, but I cannot do it every day to make sure. This did come up, there were a couple of places last year that had a tag. They were abated. I didn't even know the people moved out, and they had left garbage. Another place, we had people dump garbage on our property. And so we had gone by, had mowed the lawn, everything was good, and then all of a sudden, I get a bill. You know, so I see some problems with not, I mean, mailing somebody would even be fine. It doesn't have to be certified for mine. But I do have a problem with not giving people the notice in there, other than just stating it's in the paper, you're supposed to have your lawn mowed and your garbage picked up. So I guess that's all that I needed to state. Any questions? I mean, I-
Well, another landlord came in during the work session, and he said generally, the city tries to give them a call. Have you been getting those from time to time?
I have gotten calls on a few. And the ones that I, that had been tagged and that I was charged for, I didn't get any calls on because they had hired someone new who was driving around, I guess, and doing that part.
Okay.
I mean, I don't expect everyone to know whose property is whose. And, you know, I went and served the three-day notice, and that's when I found out that one of those properties was emptied. And then, of course, I have my properties, I'm buying them on contract from my father-in-law. So he is the legal owner, but we're the contract holder. None of the mail went to me. The certified mail all went to him. Actually, it wasn't certified, it was just mailing. And so I got away after the fact. And it is listed on everything, the contract holder. So, you know, I wasn't, you know, we weren't even mailed correctly there. we weren't even mailed correctly there. So I guess that's, those are a few things that I needed to address.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any? Okay.
I don't have any-
Thank you.
Anything further, thanks.
Leon Chehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I guess I've got a question to start with. Is the copy of the proposed ordinance that's over there, is that updated?
No.
Okay.
Not until they actually approve the amendment.
Okay. Well, I guess the first thing I want to say is I want to thank Eric for listening to me on the grass clippings and the compost. I am a gardener and basically if the, without the change, if you interpreted just as is, gardening would be illegal because you use compost, you use wood chips and the like. I also have some concern on the notice, I'm just going to try something, your picture is worth a thousand words. Dear little pleasant, and that one to you, and that one to you.
I feel left out.
Good, sorry, man.
Here, Matt, you can, I like that.
Now, looking at those just on a drive-by, my concern is if you had an intern looking at that, looks like a weedy mess, does it not?
Yeah, it looks pretty bad.
Here, I'll swap you, because mine looks pretty good.
I got wood chips in mine and stuff, mine doesn't look bad.
I see ornamental grass, but, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
What are you seeing? I mean, you're right.
That, to an amateur, somebody fresh out of school, that's chives-
Okay.
-that you're looking at.
These aren't too bad, Leon, I wouldn't, Leon, I wouldn't complain about these.
Well, and, and my concern is, you may not, but if you have an intern, the process, you know, we may not always have the same administration, the same inspectors. I think Eric gardens, one of the inspectors gardens, so I, I have allies right now, so to speak. It may not always be that way. And particularly with purple cone flowers, they get looking really ratty before they bloom.
I agree, I actually yanked some out of my yard when I first moved in, not knowing what they were.
That's one for our bed to start.
That's nice. Ooh, I like these, there's a echinacea.
Before they bloom, they get pretty rough.
They do, they look pretty-
But it's, it's obvious though.
Yeah, I think, I think especially from these, these pictures, what you might be concerned about are-
These are nice, will you come landscape for me, Leon?
I do.
I need some help.
I do.
They're nice.
So I guess my concern is with the administration that we have right now, I, I don't think there would be a problem. My concern is if there's a change in staff, you decide to go to interns, in the transition, my front yard looks pretty rough for a while. It does right at the moment, but next week the columbines will be blooming and after that the day lilies and I have some purple cone flowers out front, but there's a time it looks to the amateur, not very pretty. And I guess, to avoid a problem, at least a mailing. And, you know, I, I second what the landlord has said, at least send a paper notice. If it's that expensive to do certified mail, just send a, a letter. I, I really think that needs to be done. Everything else is by notice. You know, even from the IRS, you get, you get a notice in the mail, it's not necessarily certified mail, but you do get a notice. And I, and I think that should be added. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Leon.
Can you still own the vehicles?
No.
No, that one is passed.
Yeah, that was, that was the first hearing.
I got something about tagging on those.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Martin McKee, 1121 South 12th Street. I just happened to think, my neighbor to the north of me had a car sitting out, his son was in jail. The car sat out, the truck sat out there for like, a month. One of the city inspectors came by, put a nice little orange sticker on the passenger, on the driver's side vent window, it's hard to see, they weren't checking it because they weren't driving the thing. All of a sudden the truck, tow truck shows up out front and starts to tow it away. They ended up towing it because they said, well, we have to, when they explained the situation. Just, you know, go up to the door on some of this stuff. That's all I had to say. That one, it cost them 60 bucks and they didn't have the 60 bucks to get the car back.
Right. Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments on the first ordinance that we're discussing? I see none. Shall we read the amendments now?
Oh. You can read those amendments.
So I'm going to read through the amendments here. For preliminary adoption, the second reading of an ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter 163, environmental nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa. And, the amended language under nuisances designated 16303, the addition of unmained and un, unmaintained, rather, and unused piles of dirt or similar material would be an amendment. And then, A, mulch, compost, clippings, or similar organic material used in an appropriate manner shall not be classified as a nuisance unless unmaintained or maintained as an attraction for vermin or noticeably putrid smell. That's for you, Leon.
Okay.
Stop, just the first one. Okay, sorry, I'm getting out of order.
I need a second.
Second.
Thanks for stopping me.
Aye.
Raker?
This is on the amendment, right?
This is on the amendment.
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Now, are we ready for number two?
Yep.
The mulch one, you want me to read it again or we good? You can just, she can just read the-
You're ready for the, you're ready for the right of entry.
Okay, number three. To amend section 163.05, right of entry for inspection of the ordinance amending chapter 163, environmental nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa as follows. The new language will read, based upon the appearance of a nuisance or condition which makes such building or premises unsafe as defined in this Code of Ordinances.
Second.
All right, move to the second. Graham Murray?
Aye.
Raker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
The Fourth Amendment reads as follows, to amend section 163 dot 10, notice by publication for refuse, garbage, and vegetation violations of the ordinance amending chapter 163, environmental nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa as follows. The amended language reads, shall furthermore post initial notices upon the property, I'm sorry, no further notices shall be required provided the code office may, shall furthermore post initial notices upon the property. Clear as mud.
Just to clarify, she read what was being spooked out as well.
It was hard because it was kind of choppy, sorry.
By the language would be the code official shall furthermore post initial notice upon the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Otherwise it was like four words and it like didn't flow, I had to have it flow.
All right.
Second.
Let's go ahead and vote on it. Graham Murray?
Aye.
Raker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
All right, and then, as amended, are you ready? I, everyone?
Eric, are we not going to discuss it?
We can discuss it right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, one of the questions I have, Eric, is do we have a, do we have contact information for property owners, whether there's owner occupied or non-owner occupied already in place?
Not for all property owners, only the address from county.
So, so if somebody wanted to have their information on record, is that something that we would be able to do? Because I did notice that in the ordinance, it says that they would provide, they would tag the property or they would make notice however they- Officials shall furthermore post initial notice upon the property and provide such additional notice as the code official deems appropriate. And that's kind of open-ended as far as notice goes. So, for example, if I called and said, hey, I own this property, this property, and this property, I'd like to have my email address tied to those properties, is that something that we would be able to house?
That's something we're looking at doing with our iWork system, then-
Okay.
-when a nuisance pops up-
We'll already have the contact information in hand?
We could have it in hand and then automatically, once a nuisance is generated-
Send an email or something electronic that's instantaneous, doesn't have a cost and, and goes directly to the property owner, okay?
We don't currently have that in place, but that's, we're, we're going to iWork July 1 and that's what we're looking to try and accomplish with that.
So, so do you think that in the immediate future, July 1, we'd be able to, Ms. Wilson brought up a pretty good point, if she came down to nuisance and said, hey, I want to make sure that you guys have my email address and here's a list of all the properties we own, we would be able to load that information into that program. If, if somebody drives by and says, Ms. Wilson's grass is two inches too high, we immediately tag it and, and it goes into the, the app on the phone, because I think that's how we're operating it. And then we'll be able to send an email to Ms. Wilson.
Not currently, July 1, but-
But July 1.
We're working with the company right now, we, we have, we don't have everything set up through them, that's what we're trying to accomplish right now.
All right. Okay.
I think, and, and just to clarify Eric's point there or response on it, that's what your goal is, to see what you can get done with this system. Until you have it up and running, I mean, it, what's, what's, what's told to you that you're going to make and, and have work efficiently, until you practically use it, you, I mean, that's what they're going to try to do, but you just don't know for sure how well it works. I, I, I don't want to overpromise on that.
Okay.
That's good.
We'll certainly give an update to council once we get to the point of, we're working through meetings with them right now once we get to that.
I mean, I, I'm sure it's not going to work perfect right out of gate, but, I, I mean, we've gone to a couple communities that operate in that fashion and if they're able to do it, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to, so.
Jim said, we're working through it, but we'll give an update once we get to that.
Yep.
In, in the case of gentleman brought the car, though, are, are, are we going up to the door when we do the placard? Are they just putting the placard on and, and rolling off?
On the vehicle?
Well, vehicle or a yard nuisance, I assume we're knocking on the door to say, hey, you have a problem.
Yeah, trying to contact where we can.
Often there's nobody there.
Vehicles are on, on-street vehicles are not done by your department, are they?
If they're on-street, they're handled by the police department.
So that's a separate-
Separate deal.
Yes, and I don't know if Vicki does that.
Well, I didn't mean to start talking about the other ordinance, but I was trying to, trying to determine if the department tries to reach out besides just placard is what my question was.
On the on-street parking, all our officers are instructed to try to reach out to the homeowners or the, where the vehicle comes back to, if it's parked in front of a residence, we encourage them to go knock on the doors and that includes our parking enforcement attendant who does a majority of those.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
But if it doesn't tie to the house, it's-
Then it's different.
Chief, if it doesn't tie to an out, a, a house that's right in that area, you wouldn't, like the owner is, registered owner, doesn't necessarily live there, would you be able to, would you notify anyone?
Uh, we would try to make contact with the, the, the houses that it's parked near to see if they can tell us who parked it there, if it's a friend of theirs, family member, something of that nature, plus trying to get ahold of the registered owner. If we have them in our system down at the police department, if we have that information, information available to us, we'll try to make that phone call, yes.
Thank you. But it probably is not going to be completely, I, I just think in this, in this instance, when, when you have somebody parking in the neighborhood, it's, it's a relative's house, it may not have gotten caught just because of the nature of what was going on with it being in a relative's house as opposed to their house.
Yep. That is potential, that potentially could happen, yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Anything concerns?
I don't, I have anything else.
I mean, she brought up a good point, so I just want to make sure we ask the question and I know it leaves it open-ended, so, and I knew we were getting ready to go to this new system, which is, okay. We're good.
Good.
Okay. So we're voting second reading as amended.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Raker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Burlington, by creating a new chapter 100, Stormwater Management and Drainage Systems Utility.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Good evening. I will be doing the same PowerPoint that I've done for the last couple ones, just reviewing it and if you want to answer any questions. Uh, so what we have in front of us is, is cancelling out and striking the previous 100, chapter 100 code for stormwater utility. The previous code was very basic, didn't define a whole lot as far as any of the terms used for stormwater utility. Uh, this new code is a model code from the Iowa Municipal Utilities Association. It, it sets up a code that has quite a few definitions. It, it talks about the ERU system that we had previously discussed with Veen Shrink Kim who did our stormwater utility study. If you'd, and what we did before in the past was we set up fee structure through resolution on an annual basis. We will still set the ERU rate per this code by resolution, but all the rest of the formulation and language is set in the ordinance. If you'd hit the next one for me. Uh, so this is an example of what our current resolution sets up, um, regular, on the annual basis. As you can see, we have two different sets of charges for residential, for unmetered and metered, and then we have thresholds for commercial and industrial based on impervious surface. We have four different thresholds that, that have different charges. If you'd hit the next slide for me. And so, what is an ERU? It's the equivalent residential unit and it was figured out through GIS, taking 150 home, residential homes and averaging out what their impervious surface or hard surface, surface that does not allow rainwater to penetrate through and soak into the ground. Uh, that ERU rate is 3,360 square feet. And then the ERU fee, which is not correct on the slideshow, for some reason I haven't changed it this whole time, would be $2.58 as of July 1. And that, that rate is then applied on, per ERU for commercial, industrial, and multifamily. So, if you, I think I have some samples coming up. This is the number of properties in each of the categories and then, if you see over to the far right, gives you fairly good indication as to what their, what the average monthly bill is per parcel. And so this is a comparison from what the previous, the current structure under resolution to what the new one would be under the ERU methodology for commercial, industrial, and multifamily. You can see the square footage off to the left-hand side and then the, the rate structures off to the right and see that the, that the variance between the ERU method gives more levels of billing than what the, the current system does. If you go to the next slide for me. And this is just an example of how the bill is calculated. So, one of the requests from previous was, was to show the example of what this was. As you can see in the bottom, that's probably the most clearly indicated because there's a lot of other text up there, is the parcel on the very bottom is 7482. In certain areas, there's a lot of private drives and so those are also thrown into the parcel calculation for that bill. So, it, this, this has a drawing of all the impervious surface that they would be billed for. So, with that, I would answer any questions.
All right, do we have any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Council?
The only thing I would say is, it's, it's a minor scolding. We've looked at this thing three times, listen, next time, let's put the corrections in, okay? So, because it, you know, I, the first time I blitzed through that, I didn't catch the 258, so we need to make sure that's right.
Anything else? Good?
I'm good.
All right. Graham Murray?
Aye.
Raker?
Aye.
Wilson? Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Resolutions are next?
All right. Your Honor, I have a resolution accepting the Surface Transportation Block Grant for Madison Avenue and Ninth Street. Hi, Nick.
Give me a second.
Second.
Nick's back.
In front of you is a resolution that would approve accepting the applicant, or the funds generated from the SDGB application that we applied for back in December of 2017. Eric, would you throw up that pool? So, there, the City of Burlington's application for Madison and Ninth Street ranked second out of four. There is an estimated $1.2 million of SDGB funds available. As you can see, Fort Madison's project of Business 61 was the top-ranked project, and they will receive the full requested amount of $780,000, leaving $429,000 and change left. So, the options in front of us, we have the opportunity to either accept or deny these funds. If, should we deny the funds, the funds get to, will be kicked down to the next available project, and then therefore, you know, they'll continue down to the furthest one if they deny it as well. The Madison Ninth Street Avenue project was a estimated $1.8 million project, where the City of Burlington was requesting $1.4 million. So, this request, or this amount becomes quite shy of what we had originally requested. Our amount that we requested is more than the total available dollars, but it's an 80/20 match that we went full force for. Should we accept the SDGB funds, we are required to do the project as read in the application. This means the full depth, or the full length of the project from Angular to Sunset, the bike lanes, the full-depth reconstruction from Angular to South, and this project estimate, it varied a little bit from when we did the five-year road plan back in October. It was in fiscal year '22, along with Oak Street, and then Parkway. The original estimate was done as just an asphalt overlay from Division, actually, all the way to Harrison. The reason for the change, for one, in the SEC, the federal classification that we had actually just previously talked about, Madison or Ninth Street in that area does not qualify as a, as a street that would be available to accept funds, so we shifted it south. Also, the biggest thing in the cost perspective is the full-depth reconstruction is a lot more expensive than just an asphalt overlay, so that, we went for the full-fledged reconstruction in this grant application. One item of note is that the, we just heard that the SDGB funds, the Surface Transportation Block Grant funds are available for a federal state dollar swap. This means that the City of Burlington and other cities that use these funds will not be burdened with the Davis Bacon requirements, which is the prevailing wages. It tends to add 10% to 20% on the top of a project. So, the $1.8 million that Jesse had estimated for this project should be a little bit less because the Davis Bacon numbers were applied to this estimate. My recommendation is to accept the funds to be able to do this project in fiscal year '22. Just want to restate that, should we accept the funds, we would have to do what we did in the, we said in the application, the full length of the project, the full-depth reconstruction, the elimination of the parking, and then the bike lanes. So, upon that, that's my recommendation.
Nick, I have a question for you. So, we've discussed this once before in a work session. So, because of the width of the street, it would be city staff's recommendation we're going to eliminate that parking?
Correct. In order to, in order to receive the SDGB funds, we have to follow SUDAS spec, which is statewide urban design architectural standards, I think. Regardless, it says that in order to do that, we have to have 10.5 minimum width road. Currently, that road is 30-foot wide. That does not support three lanes. In their eyes, a parking lane is considered a lane of, not a lane of travel, but a lane. And so, we would not be able to support that SUDAS spec to be able to receive the funds. So, the bike lanes was an additional, was a filler. If we were to accept the funds, we'd have to eliminate the parking. We had room, because bike lanes have a five-foot space, and they don't have the vertical clearance issues that a travel lane does. So, that is the reason why the bike lanes was added in, because we were vacating a space that we would have to have been eliminating anyway because of the SDGB fund requirements to follow SUDAS.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or concerns in the audience?
Hello, I'm Paul Carl from 1304 Madison Avenue. And just to address real quickly a couple things he said there, he made mention of the SUDAS requirements. I have a different interpretation of the SUDAS requirements. The way I read them, a minimum of 10 feet is required for each roadway lane of traffic, and only a minimum of eight feet for a parking lane. I don't know where he got his numbers, or what, but that's the way I read it, when I looked at it. And also, so that would change the requirements. As far as the grant application goes, he didn't have to eliminate parking totally based on these roadway width. They allow for existing streets and so forth. This was just a resurface. If he was going to totally reconstruct the roadway, yes, he would have to make those lane widths much greater. But since this was a resurfacing, that did not have to happen. Of the properties affected, I'm only really referring to the ones from South Street to Sunset Avenue on Madison Avenue. The ones north of that, that's kind of a different situation, so I'm not really addressing that at all. But of the area from South Street to Sunset, that's approximately 100 houses along that way that their parking would be impacted, and their livelihood would be impacted. I understand, you know, the city went through a lot of work to accomplish these, you know, there's a lot of planning, there's a lot of, and I applaud that, and I think it's great that we're looking for alternate forms of money and so forth. But when it comes to negatively impacting the property owners that we currently have, I don't think that's free money, then. It was mentioned that we can't turn down this money, some $400,000, but when you add that out between the 100 houses that it's negatively impacting, that's roughly $4,000 of property. So, to get this $429,000, we're going to lower property values of those 100 houses. And I'm thinking that's not a far stretch to say we're going to lower them by about four grand per house. So, it's not really free money. We're just kind of trading off where the money's coming out of whose pockets. Again, the Complete Streets program was kind of cited as justification for this project, how we needed to follow the Complete Streets guidelines. Well, also, the way I read the Complete Streets, it says we will design and engineer our public facilities to accommodate all people, not just some people. So, it's to accommodate bike riders, it's people walking, people driving, people parking vehicles as well. So, if you're citing the Complete Streets as justification for this, I see it the opposite way. The Complete Streets is actually justification for not voting for this. By proceeding with this, basically, you're eliminating the people who park there from using the property any longer. So, it's not open to everyone any longer. Those people can no longer park there. He was discussing the prevailing wage, or the Davis Bacon wage requirements. He gave a couple of numbers there of 10% to 20% that are factored. I think that's also quite high, in my opinion. I would say the high would be 10%, and the lowest savings that would be realized, or could be realized, is zero. Those are just guesses. We don't know, you know, what money, if any, would be saved based on that guideline there. So, basically, with all that, I ask that you vote no for accepting of this grant money. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple others?
I own Joe's Inn, 1534 Madison Avenue, and I just wanted to tell you, or let you know how this will, bicycle path will affect me and my business. I'm not a speaker. Well, for one thing, it will take away the parking from my business. We use Madison Avenue, and I'm, we're limited to very little parking. On, we have to maintain both sides of the street on Denmark, and if people can't park on Madison Avenue, then they're going to come and take our parking away from my customers, or they could, you know. And also, this will take the value of my place down by, because there won't be parking, or limited parking. So, the value of the bar will go down. That's not all I got to say.
Thank you.
Vote no.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Butler, and I live at 1308 Madison Avenue. I've lived there since 1978, and I love the place. And you want to come along and make it a little less desirable for me, and any opportunity I may have in the future to sell my property, because it'll be less desirable. I think one thing that, two things, I guess, I'd mention, is the fact that it's pretty common for people to speed from South Street to Harrison, whether it's a motorcycle or a vehicle. And I live three doors south of LeWise Street on the east side, and I can hear people light it up at South Street. And the speeds they gain by the time they get to my place, I'm guessing 60 miles an hour plus. In fact, they're going so fast that they'll hit their taillights at Joe's Inn, which is at Denmark, so they can make the stop at Harrison. I think if you clear all par, and I realize parked cars are an issue for that traffic, but if you take parked cars off that one side, like it is today, you give them a drag strip, pure and simple. It'll be a clear shot, and they'll take advantage of it. The other issue that may even be as important, or more important, is the traffic, the people that do use the parking are going to be forced to park on side streets, okay? North of me is LeWise. I drive a city, I drive a Burlington community school bus. I have to come down Madison in the morning and make a right turn on LeWise. There's typically a car on one side of that street right now. Incoming, traffic coming off of LeWise onto Madison is an issue. If you force more people to park on them side streets, it becomes an issue for the, not only the school buses, but for the city buses. It becomes an issue for your garbage trucks and recycling. And every Monday that there's trash pickup on LeWise, I'm forced to sit and wait for them to go clear the length of that block going east, picking up trash, so I can get by because of the parking that's there now. It's only going to get worse. And the same just south of me, there's no alleys there. There is, there is on the west side of Madison, on the east side of Madison, there are no alleys at all. So, there's no place to go, other than the side streets, and I don't know. Maybe the police department can address that better than I can, but I think it will definitely be an issue. And the school buses have no option with, I drive, I pick up special needs children, so that's door-to-door, that's mandated. So, it isn't like I can pull up to a corner like normal children, and there's eight kids that get on. I have to go to the door with a child in the morning and at night both. So, we use a lot of side streets. We have no, we have no control over where they live. It's the way it is. But, anyway, I thank you. I would recommend you vote no.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Barnum McKee, 1121 South 12th Street. You already have bike routes, and Madison is not one of them. 14th is a bike route, all the way to the park. Did you know that? Have you seen your map of your bike routes? Madison is not a bike path. You have 14th. It comes down, I think it comes down Garfield, or West Avenue, turn onto Garfield. You'd have to look it up, but 14th is already a bike path, and so is Main Street. So, you don't need one on Madison. And when it comes to all this, what do you call them, the streets?
Smut, street, complete smut.
Complete streets. You're turning every town, every street into this town. All the major arteries are going to be one-way this way, one-way this way, with bike paths or turning lanes. I don't know how you're handling, going to handle the traffic out there on Agency and the Division. You already got a messed up kind of odd division. But Agency, all that traffic, the four lanes going out to Walmart, or Menards, or wherever, or Hy-Vee, you're going to restrict it down to one lane each direction. You already have trouble getting through the stoplights as it is. So, just when it comes to this Complete Streets thing, I don't think it's the best thing in the world. We don't need to be like the big cities.
Right. We are, I do want to try to stay on topic with this specific.
Well, it has to do with the Complete Streets. We don't need to be like the big cities and have bike paths everywhere. We're not West Des Moines.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Just a couple of clarifications.
Thank you, Bob.
I don't think we're going to just two lanes at the Agency Street. It's, I think it's taking four lanes, right, Nick? It's not dropping down.
It's widening to five.
Yeah.
Chris Repke, 1306 Madison Avenue. I guess I started the ball rolling with this a little. But anyways, remember in January, I think it was, as time has flown by, I kind of gave out the Christmas cards? I don't remember receiving any, and that they possibly could have blown away. Also, I have the reasons, some of the reasons I have are, have been said already. But again, I want to recommend, you know, say that, remember the difference in the project. Ninth Street is a total reconstruction. Madison Avenue is a resurfacing, adding bike lanes, a whole really different project to Ninth Street. Also, Madison Avenue will face consequences for this. It will affect, I think, the property values, and then also think of the ripple effect. I mean, if you have a neighborhood that prices are going down, it tends to reflect block after block, not just on that street, but going either east or west. And again, remember, people are dependent on some sides, on alleys, and they are not repaired, they are not maintained by the city. And consider this, if you have a home, like the houses on the west side across from me, they're up on a high terrace, and realtor, you're trying to sell it, or this says, well, you have to park in the side street, there's a lot of cars here, let's go up the alley, and people start going up the alley, and you go, I don't like this, this is holes, it's rough, it's not smooth. People don't even want to then consider the house. Also, safety for children. In the grant application, it mentioned that bike lanes would serve James Madison and Grimes Elementary, and basically allow the students to bike on the bike lanes. Please note, James Madison is no longer in middle school. I'm not sure actually what's going on there. I know they do have Head Start. But Grimes goes to fifth grade. Be very dangerous to put a 10-year-old child in a non-separate bike It'd be very dangerous to put a 10-year-old child in a non-separate bike lane along with 3,000-pound vehicles. It's not necessarily because of the drivers, but 10-year-olds, their minds wander, they think of other things. "Oh, look at that over there." I mean, I'm 56, I still do that. But it puts them more in a dangerous position, and not in a safety mode. And again, remember, free money for the project is not free when the project has a negative effect on the living environment of Madison Avenue. It's, again, very possible. It will now put neighbor against neighbor as we vie for parking on the side streets. And as for complete streets, how does Madison Avenue become a complete street when all that is being done is removal of one type of use, i.e. parking, and putting in bike lanes? And again, what is not said too is about complete neighborhoods. A street is a street that can either be negative or positive to a neighborhood. A neighborhood, though, is where you want positive things. It's where people raise their children and send them to school. It is where adults grow old, when time is right, they sell their homes to the next generation to raise their own children there, to continue the cycle that continues on, that makes a city vibrant, that makes a city healthy, that makes a neighborhood, and adds to value over time to the city. Seeing what is being done on Madison Avenue, the bike lanes doesn't add to that. It, again, puts things more in a negative light than positive. Again, some of you I know, I've had some, you probably received some emails, I had some copies to me from this past week. Also, remember the petitions that were given out to you later, I think it was February, all the time kinda goes by. Again, those opposing the Madison Avenue bike lanes. So again, I'm one of those who asks, please vote no, and please come up with a better plan that incorporates and builds instead of, at the whole city and Madison Avenue, rather than just taking away from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, Chris, I did, I did have the postcard in my hand, I pulled in the side street across from your property, I just didn't deliver it.
Okay.
I was by and took a look.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just bought a house a year ago on the 1700 block of Madison Avenue, and I'm a woman of a certain age that was finally able to do that. And I was very happy to do that, because my parents are aging, and I can finally have the family celebration at my home. Taking away the parking in front of my block would be a significant loss to me, because then I'd have to worry about not only my parents, but my significant other's parents trying to get to my house, where's where I want them to be, so they don't have to worry about having the celebration at their home, where they're aging and not able to provide what I could provide, without the worry of having to have all of the people over and all of the work that goes into having a, a family celebration like Christmas and Easter. The block I live on is the longest block on Madison. It does not have a cross street. There's Barrett, and there's Sweeney on the other side of the street, but Sweeney doesn't cut through my block, so that creates a very long block. I do have an alley access to my house with a very short slab before it goes into a garage. For those concerns, that's why I would prefer to have parking in front of my house, so that my family can safely come to my house and not have to vie for side street parking that is already inundated, without the parking being removed from that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Scott Schneider, 1403 Madison. I just wanted to make a few points, and I think most everybody has said those already, but I think the biggest thing is the parking. I live on the corner of Madison and Dodge, and to go down Dodge Street, some days it's really tough to get through, and I can imagine, you know, when we had a lot of snow, you couldn't go that way, you had to go the other direction, because everybody's parked on the side streets. And to reiterate what Bob said earlier, I think if you put a bike lane there, that just gives more, more chance for speed, and, you know, you have a lot of kids on that road, before school, after school, and I think it'd be very dangerous. I think it's dangerous now, but that's really all I had to say, and, yeah, vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or concerns in the audience? I see, okay.
Stephanie Wilson, I do have a house off of Madison Avenue, but it doesn't really, isn't affected by this. But listening to these people who live there, and that's their home, I see there's, and I, and I asked a gentleman how wide the grassy area was between the street and the actual sidewalk, you know, 'cause I've never really looked at it, you know, it gets mowed, and that's about all I pay attention to. But it seems to be, if, if they really need to fix the road, I haven't really paid much attention to that road. But with getting rid of some of that city-owned property in between the sidewalks and the streets, and widening the area so they can continue to park there, but yet still redo the street, that seems like that might be an option. I've always lived everywhere where the curb, this, it's the street, the curb, and the sidewalk. I've never had huge spaces of grass between that. And it seems kind of a no-brainer on that effect. Sorry, just to put my two cents in.
Nope, you're fine. Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments for you guys, counsel?
Nick, the SUDAS stuff?
I was just looking that up. My, my city engineer is the one that came up with that spec. I don't know what, what he's referring to in SUDAS, but this is a collector, so it has different levels than just a residential, and I don't know if that's what he's referring to or not. But, but our city engineer looked at it. I'm sure that things were, you know, well researched prior to coming to this conclusion.
And just to reiterate, regardless of whether the bike lane goes in, the bike lane goes in because it was in the original plan as presented for the SPEG grant, I think I said that right. But even if we hadn't put a bike lane in, we would still be forced to eliminate the parking due to the restrictions. And just moving the curb over to create more space, so that we could have kept the parking, was gonna be exponentially more expensive.
You have a lot of money in, in moving out all those trees, and then moving that curb line back.
Yeah.
Because then you have cross-slope issues too, with the crown of the road, and then radius issues at intersections. I, I wouldn't know what an estimate would cost to try and move the curb back, but you're, I think you're well over a $2 million project by then.
Right, and, and I think you threw that, close to that same number out last time I asked that question several months ago, so, okay.
Without, without receiving the state funds, you don't have to conform to SUDAS standards? Those are recommended standards? Is that correct?
If you're, if you're- Because you're talking about the DOT, the, the federal versus state money swap?
If you're not doing, no.
If you decide not to take it all.
Oh, okay. If you decide to not receive these funds, you do not have to follow that spec.
It's, I mean, it's a recommended, from a safety perspective, that you do, and staff is gonna tell you that that's what is recommended, but you don't have to follow that standard. It's-
So, the, the worst part of Madison is between south and, or south and angular, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So if you didn't take the funds, is there enough there? I know that you don't have that figure to do that project and not do any-
We probably would have to shorten the length of the project. Between Harrison and Sunset, Madison or Ninth, or Ma, it's Madison there, is not as in worse shape as it is further north. That section between south and angular is, is, there's, there's, there's some serious base issues going on underneath.
The rest of it's just an overlay, right?
Correct.
Nick, one of the questions that I was getting from constituents is, will this reconstruction contribute to ADA compliance? They said there were elderly people in the area.
We are able, when we redo a road project where the sidewalk crosses the project, we always fix the, the ADA ramps, so those are always fixed. But the problem is, is the sidewalk along the length of the project are still, oftentimes have ADA issues. It doesn't take very much of, of, of a fault between two panels to cause an ADA issue. And those, those are, if we started getting into replacing sidewalks, it'd be pretty expensive, but those, those sidewalks are the property owner's responsibility to take care of.
And then another question I kept getting is, fear of declining property values, that should a homeowner decide, decide to sell? Did you find out any information on that?
I talked to Matt Warner, and ultimately, from an assessed value standpoint, it would be upon actual reality of, of sales in that area over the given year, and to try and prove that the variable from the, this project cause is, is indeterminate, and so, and I'm not a realtor, so I wouldn't, wouldn't even dare to jump into that realm, so.
Yeah, I did a little poking around online, and I did find out that for most communities, and again, you can say, "Well, Burlington's not like most communities," but it did look like an increase of about 11%. So I know some maybe that was your big fear, that when I go to sell, I'm actually gonna lose money in the transaction. And it looks like it may err in your favor, and actually increase your property values, so.
Hey, Nick, so, yeah, you don't have the figures for that. You don't have no, you don't have any idea what the overlay, the overlay versus the-
I don't have the breakdown.
You don't have the breakdown? Thanks, 'cause, all right.
I mean, I have it somewhere, it's just not in front of me, sorry.
So, that's all right. So Jim, what happens if we, if we say, I mean, we go back to the drawing board, and we say, "Okay, we're only gonna worry about the worst section," which is between south and whatever it is, angular, right?
I mean, we would recommend moving forward in a full-depth reconstruction, but, but you could go ahead and probably complete the full length of the project with just an asphalt overlay. It probably isn't a fix to the problem that you're seeing there. I mean, you probably could get some of the base issues done through some patching, but ultimately, what, what we would probably recommend is, is cutting the section further from the south going north, so, so maybe just going to Harrison or something like that.
Okay. But there is a way that we might be able to do that and table some of that work if we opted not to take the grant.
And, and also, should we not accept the grant? There are two other roads that are in that fiscal year in the five-year road plan, Oak and Parkway. After discussing it with, with Jesse, we think that Madison or Ninth in that area is, is probably in worse shape. Oak used to see a lot more traffic. It has some issues in certain areas that maybe some patching could take care of. And then Parkway has its concrete, and there's some things that we're gonna try and do over the next couple of years to try and get that taken care of. But, but this section of road is definitely the priority in that fiscal year as far as the five-year road plan.
But we would never, we, not never, but we would likely be ineligible for any further grants down the road because of the width. Because any, anytime we, anytime we would go for grants-
Not necessarily. You could reapply, you could reapply next year with a widening of that project. You're talking about a much larger project, and I don't know what kind of match we have available. I think that the STGB funds available on a given year are relatively about the same, so essentially, you'd be going after the whole sum of that, that funds. And there is value, when you apply, to have a lessened match, to try and be able to, to get that funded.
I mean, I'll tell you where I'm at, is, this, our community is not in a position to be able to turn away money. Every, I mean, every time we talk about property taxes, trying to raise new funds, we come back to the fact that we are, we're putting, we're supposed to be putting $5 million into our infrastructure, and we're putting significantly less of that in, because we don't have the funds. So to turn that down, it goes completely against the principle and, and why I ran for the position. One of the things that I did do is, I've spent a lot of time in that community, looking at the different things available to those homeowners, because it's been on our plate for, we're going on five, six months now. One of the things that I noticed is, every single house on that drive that is affected has some type of off-street parking, unless there's one that I missed. I went through the GIS, they all either have a garage access on the front, they have garage in the rear, or they are on a corner where they have side street access right there. So by doing this, we're not eliminating anybody's primary parking at all, right? I mean, you, you've been through there, and perhaps you haven't, haven't done that, but I didn't see anything where we were, we were affecting anybody's primary parking. I understand that it is a significant inconvenience, but at some point in time throughout our history, this was done on West Avenue, and this is, was done on Mount Pleasant. Regardless of whether we do the bike lane or not, the parking, the parking has to go in order to be able to accept the $429,000. And it just falls back to, to my original comment. I just, our community isn't in a position to be able to turn down that much money, so. That's where I'm at.
All right, you guys all ready? Here you vote? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on it.
Okay, so I vote accept the money. Graham Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Phillips?
Aye. Not an easy one.
All right. Let's move on?
Your Honor, I have a resolution to install a four-way stop at the intersection of Harris Avenue and South Central Street.
I need a second.
Second.
This resolution would, would approve installing a four-way stop at South Central and Harrison. To install stop signs, Public Works Department goes through a warranting process where there are three, three sets of warranting factors, traffic density, accident history, and then line of sight issues. Harrison is considered an arterial road that handles about 4,700 cars a day. Central from Harrison north is considered a minor arterial, and then south of Harrison, it's a residential, and it does not have a traffic count on there. The DOT does traffic counts on a regular basis, but it does not count that road, 'cause it's considered residential. There have been five accidents at the, in the intersection in the last 10 years. Based on this count, the number of accidents would not trigger a four-way stop, 'cause there currently is a two-way stop. There's a little bit of a line of sight issue at, from the south going northbound, however, the stop signs already exist on that section there to create the, the stop. The reason why this is on the regular agenda, because I do not recommend installing this. To install a stop sign on our arterial road where needs like this is kind of untraditional. But I would be open for any questions.
Nick, sorry, I always get you right when you turn away. So we discussed that, remind me, we discussed the line of sight, is there a tree? You said there's a tree.
There's a tree, yep.
Okay.
And you said we've touched base with the homeowner?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
And raised our concerns? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Any others from?
So if we vote no on this, will we contact that homeowner again and try to rectify that problematic tree, so we, so it's safer anyway?
Yeah, we could do that.
Beautiful.
All right, anything else? Good?
Have you done that here or not?
Done with the stop-
Talking about that, how's that feel?
The stop sign?
Yeah. Have you done with our comments?
Oh, he didn't come up.
Go ahead.
All right. Well, you brought up, Martin McKee, 1121 South 12th. You brought up about contacting the homeowner. Have any of you driven by it?
Yes.
You notice it's just a very small arborvitum, I believe, tree, there in the corner. That house is for sale. So, you know, it might be to their advantage to take that tree down, because it's not really a decorative tree where it's sitting, but, again, you said that you didn't want to do it, have the city do it, because it sets a precedent. But on the other hand, as far as traffic safety concern goes?
Well, I believe the tree is on, is not on-
It's on private property, but it's right on the corner of private property.
It's a homeowner tree, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They say it's on private property, but it's right on the corner of it, which is why it blocks the traffic site from the, from the east.
If the real estate company is listening, maybe we'll tell them to, to cut it down, and it will enhance the sale of that home as we're saying.
Could be. All right, anyway, that's all I had to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and take it to vote.
Graham Murray?
So a yes means that we're-
If you vote yes, you're voting to install the four-way stop.
Okay, no.
Rinker?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 parking lot improvement, Sixth Street and Washington Street- Sixth Street and Washington Street lot.
I need a second.
Second.
The resolution in front of you would approve awarding contract to Hickey Contracting?
Nope. MJ?
MJ Daly. I confused the two. MJ Daly, I was taking a guess, I knew one of them that was Hickey. MJ Daly in the amount of $115,422.97. This project is a full-depth reconstruction with concrete. This project took a fairly substantial increase when there was a noted storm sewer line that was still connected to the sanitary sewer. That area is supposed to be separated currently, so there is a fairly substantial increase in cost to be able to run a new storm line down the west side of the parking lot, down the sidewalk on Sixth Street. And so there's quite a bit of concrete replacement in that. So I would recommend approval. If you want to talk about, the funding for this is, it was actually a combined project several years ago with the Third and Washington parking deck. There were some monies, a lot of monies was used on the Third and Washington parking deck. To fund this project, we will be using some stormwater funds or sanitary sewer funds, and then also potentially using, I'm looking to you, Jim, for this, sales tax that was.
Sales tax.
From, from the leftover funds that did not get expended on the necessary money for the buses. We had two grants rather than the budgeted one, so we had some excess funds in sales tax.
Any questions or concerns in the audience? I see none.
None.
Good.
Good.
Let's take it to vote.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 parking lot improvements, Main Street and Valley Street.
Second.
Move in second.
The resolution, this resolution would award to Hickey Contract in the amount of $64,763.31. This is where two buildings previously owned had been demoed, and now there is just an open area. Be in addition to the Main and Valley parking lot. It's concrete, add about 20 so, parking spots. This funding is out of sales tax, I believe?
Probably was originally.
I think that's what it was. It says capital fund, but I don't think Jesse put that around right. I think it was sales tax funds. This one is a little bit higher than what, I'll take full credit, I estimated it a year and a half ago, and I didn't obviously come up with the right answer, but I approve, I recommend approval on this. I think it'll, we need to get something in there. I think it'll add quite a bit of parking to.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns in the audience?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. If my understanding is correct, this is for the Police Department, parking only, is that correct?
Will be, this, when this was originally done, the Police Department received the parking lot that was Catty Corner from the US Bank building. We did a swap then for this lot. Originally, that lot was designed to be specifically for the Police Department to go, to go along with their, with that purchase. It would have, if we'd have left it Catty Corner over on where Millard's expansion went, it would have been specifically for Police Department parking. Switching it over there, we're, and getting that paved and restripped, we will accommodate in that new, in that parking lot, after it's all reconfigured, the equivalent amount of parking spots that would have been gained in the lot previously. So that, that was, I think, in the 15-spot range.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So they'll get in the 17 neighborhood, the other three will go into general circulation in that lot. That's, that's the plan.
Okay, so I'm not 100% tracking with you there, but, but I guess my, you know, parking is a significant issue. The, the city recognizes the importance of parking for its police officers. The, last week at, at the meeting, there was a discussion of parking for the Recplex. I want to, I guess I would, would hope that the funds that are utilized for parking, when it comes to the police project, that should come out of the funds, at least my humble opinion, should come out of the funds that were designated for the redoing of the, of the Police Department. And funds from sales tax dollars that are allocated to parking should be used to benefit other projects aside from, from the Police Department project. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
None here.
Alright. You good?
Good.
Take it to vote. Graham Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution waiving the building permit fees for the Burlington Community School District project at Clark Fieldhouse.
Second.
Good evening. Greg Reynolds, the Director of Finance for the Burlington Community School District. We would like to thank the council for their consideration of the waiving of the fees. This project is the final phase of the Purple and Gray's Foundation for the upgrades to Bracewell Stadium. So I know they've, they've worked very hard to raise the funds to, to complete this final phase of this project. You know, the updates and upgrades to Bracewell have been a beautiful and wonderful asset to the school district and to the community also. So again, Purple and Gray, on their behalf, will appreciate your consideration of the waiving of these building permit fees, and we do appreciate the city's cooperation and partnership with the schools.
Good.
Sounds good.
Do we have any questions or concerns in the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None. None here.
Good. Alright, let's vote on it.
Just to know what that amount is. It was in the resolution, but it wasn't in the resolution previously.
Oh, yeah.
Seventy-nine ninety-nine, it didn't change, right?
No, we didn't have that at the previous meeting, the exact amount, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Alright, at this time, we will take comments from the audience. Does anyone have any, okay, a couple.
Paul Carroll, 1304 Madison Avenue. Just to start, it's sad to hear that Councilman Rinker feels that the city's in such bad financial shape that we have to trade off basically our property owners' interests for $400,000. But that being said, if the numbers are correct, if we save approximately 20% off the wage information and the $429,000, the way I calculate that, you know, that's in excess of $600,000. I would ask that the city direct staff to look into the option of expanding a parking situation along Madison Avenue. At least the section that I live in, most of the section between south and Harrison Street has a 70-foot easement. So more than ample room that parking could be put in on the west side, like Ms. Wilson had mentioned earlier, there is plenty of room. There's probably a good 15, 20 feet between the curb and the sidewalk on the west side of the road. So I would ask that the council direct staff to look into that option at least, to protect the interest of property owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. I want to express some relief at being not the only person to talk about parking at a city council meeting. As, as you, as you can see, parking is a significant issue, and, and I understand that there are some changes taking place to some of the signs and the way that we, the way that we present parking downtown. This is going to continue to be an issue, and I, I sat here last week and was just about heartbroken to hear a request come in for $450,000 for parking for the Recplex, when we can't seem to get that kind of respect for business owners downtown and our difficult parking situation. However, I'm not here just to complain. I wanted, and I will send all this to you on email, but I wanted to present a couple of ideas that I've had some discussions about parking with, with people downtown and some things to consider. And this is, this does tie into the Tiger Grant. But behind the Drake Hardware and Software, there's a parking lot. It's hardly used. The access to it is unclear, and there's a little yellow box that gets about $5 a day in revenue that comes into the city. And on the other side of the alley is another parking lot that is, that is mostly rented out and unusable for the, for the general public. One idea that, that I came up with that I've run past some folks is to, is to make that parking area more effective by flattening out the lots, because right now, there's an alley in the middle, there's a terrible steep hill, there's a curb, it's a, it's a wreck. And if that, if that were to be leveled out and a two-level ramp put into that space, you could add about 100 parking spots. And, and you could provide access to that, to that parking space by putting through a, through Nancy Navy Park and doing away with that park, which I sit next to, and I can tell you that it never gets used. That, that land would be more effectively used by, by providing a Jefferson Street access to a parking facility that could be built behind those buildings. So that's the one idea. The second idea, and I've had discussions with a few of you about this, is that Seventh Street is an eyesore. It's, it's closed, it's closed half the year, and half of it's closed all year. And sitting out in the middle of it are giant cement pylons that block off a significant portion of that street. And quite candidly, it'll never get fixed. It's been that way for as long as I can remember. And that, that street simply will not ever get fixed. So there isn't really much point in having it. So the idea that, that I've been talking to folks about is actually to go in and remove, to remove Seventh Street. Just take a backhoe in there, start digging it out, flatten it out, take the whole street out. Behind there is parking lots. Parking lots that are in worse shape than any of the parking lots that are being funded for repair. And there's maybe one or two cars generally parked back in those parking lots because they're in such awful shape. If you took out Seventh Street and redid the, the city-owned areas and perhaps worked with the, the building owners that own the space to the west, you could put in a, a three-tier parking ramp there with access off of Jefferson Street through Seventh Street that would provide you access up to Washington. And it would help businesses up at the top of the hill, it would provide additional parking for Snake Alley, and it would provide, you know, 150 or 200 parking spots for businesses on Jefferson Street, and it would provide you a direct access off, off of Jefferson Street again to parking. So when you look at parking signs, right now, and I understand this is going to be addressed, but right now, when you drive down Jefferson Street, there's not one single sign that points to parking. So the perception that we're fighting is that there is no parking on, for any of the businesses on Jefferson Street. And, and so, you know, this is a way that we could actually put in a couple hundred parking spots. The Tiger Grant, I know we're early in that discussion, but what I find is that the window for discussion for these types of things is, is pretty narrow. And I've, I've shared some emails back and forth with Charlie about what are the requirements of the Tiger Grant, and I've read the proposal that was submitted and looked at the budgets that were put in there. And there aren't any commitments in the Tiger Grant as far as we will absolutely do this, or we will absolutely do that. It's kind of a loose collage, at least my impression is that it's a loose collage of ideas on what can be done with the money. But there is, there is some flexibility in terms of how we spend that money. And, and I don't think I need to remind the council that Tiger stands for Transportation Investment into Greater Economic Recovery. And I can tell you that even though I really like Riverside Park, not $1 of revenue flows to any of the businesses on Jefferson Street as a result of having Riverside Park. There just is not a connection there. And part of the reason is that everything from the marina to the water plant is government-owned. And if you go one block in, you have the Sheriff's Department, you do have one commercial property, then you have the post office, then you have Millard's, which Millard's is great, but it's, but it's not a, a place that people come to, to visit. Going one further block in, you have the library, the courthouse, a block of commercial development, then you have the police station, and then you have the police parking lot. So you have to go about three blocks off the river before you get to the commercial space that people will come and visit and spend time and money at. And so there's a huge disconnect between any riverfront green space and, and, and the commercial businesses that, that the Tiger Grant is really intended to help support. So I, I just want this idea, I wanted to float this idea out to everyone. We have a unique opportunity to, to invest in downtown. And as you heard tonight, and as you heard last week from the Chamber of Commerce, and as you've heard from me so many times, parking is a significant issue. It's important to the people of Burlington, it's important to the people who live here, and it's important to the people who own businesses here. And if you can take it upon yourselves to vote for parking, to spend money for the Police Department, because the Police Department knows that, that parking is important, then perhaps you'll give some consideration to parking for business owners downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have any other comments? One more?
One more. Dean Finacy, 211 St. Northern Drive. Dean Kelsey Finacy. Basically, I want to know, how's it going in Mount Pleasant Bridge? Did you get caught with the railroad to see how you're going to organize with railroad and them to rebuild it?
Nick, the bids are.
The bid opening is next Tuesday at the DOT.
Yeah, so we'll have bids being opened in.
Probably starting in August, July, she said they have to order.
Are you gonna, you'll update us in a second. He's gonna talk about it in a second.
Oh, sorry.
Can I let him talk?
I was kind of, I wanted to know, are they gonna work with the railroad because the railroad blows under there?
We've gotten all the approvals.
Okay, okay, that's one I want to know. About him, about parking downtown, I do agree, we do need something about it, because you got that one over building, new apartments over by the bookstore. I heard they're talking about tearing out, they're building down where the old police station used to be and build a motel there. One spot's never used is under the bridge, that I never see any cars parked there. I, you know, that I think would be a good spot, maybe somehow to tell people that'd be a good spot to park. But we do need to do something about that because you got more people, which is good, you got more people moving down here, but where are they, where are you going to have people in these apartments, where are they going to park? If you have a motel, where are they going to park? And you have businesses, where are they going to park? And that is a major issue because that needs to be dealt with. And are they going to redo the street where that, this, okay, I don't get to by my memory. You go past, you turn off, you turn on till you go past USA Bank. You keep on going where the manor used to be. You keep on going where Job Services, you keep on where Jist Stop is, then you go up that hill. That stretch belongs to DOT, right?
I'm not even.
I got lost after the manor.
Well, you go straight, you know, you're like going straight. Here, here's USA Bank, you go, and you go, you're turning like toward this way, you're turning this way, past USA Bank, like you're on that street where you're going toward the end where, where you're going like toward Muscatine or to Fort Madison.
Okay.
That street. I see a lot of the red things on there and, and numbers. I just wonder, are they going to redo that whole street, that whole stretch, the DOT?
They've got a march right now.
Yeah, I just want to, are they going to redo that whole thing?
Okay, yep, he's gonna, Nick's also going to talk about that as well.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Head of the, and one more thing, you know, always bring this up, and I still say it. Long time ago, there used to be a bridge where people used to walk and used to drive their, their bikes. their, their buggies and horses. And people say, where's the bridge? Where's the bridge? We can't go to Beautiful Park anymore. We need Cascade Bridge. It would be nice one of these days, if I was on a truck, I would give them money, I'm not. It would be nice that we had a bridge being built there, brand-new one. And may the Lord Jesus Christ bless you and watch over you and give you guidance overall what you do. You do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so who wants to go next? Do you want to go ahead and?
I'll. I have my list. You made me make a list. Sorry.
Mount Pleasant Street Bridge is, I kind of mentioned that before, but it's set to do the bid letting on next Tuesday. I don't know the timeframe, but it's done at the DOT. We will probably award bids sometime in early June, once we get back the DOT approvals, and they'll probably start sometime in early July by the time they order all the materials for that. We will be working with BNSF, they'll have a flagger on site, we have a, we have a full rail agreement in hand, so that'll be a year-long project. Roosevelt, the DOT is doing calculations to do some patching on, on there, so I was hoping they actually weren't going to do it with Agency Street, so messed up, so they were actually, I don't know when they'll be doing that, so they don't keep me overly informed sometimes. Flooding, we, we are on projected crest of 18.3. As you will notice down at the riverfront, we have HESCOs set up against the permanent wall. We have them set back to, we shot some heights back to where the 18-foot level would be. We did go too high, because if the water were to come up, we wouldn't be able to access it. We had a belt placer down there today. I don't know that it's going to get to 18.3, seeing the projections up further north. They hit their crest, and then they're on the downward slide, but we'll be watching it. It should hit the crest sometime, I think Thursday, but we, we should be able to add some HESCOs on to the end of each of the current sets. The north side is somewhere where we haven't put up HESCOs before, we haven't done any flood protection up there in the past, so there were some unknowns walking into it. Should the river look like it's going to get up, upwards of 19, we will be going all the way across that north parking lot to put HESCOs up to the curb line. At that point, there is a little bit of concern to go across the railroad tracks, just because there's no crossing currently set up there. Access will be limited then to the north boat ramps. Actually, at that point, I don't know that you're ever going to get anything into the north boat ramps anyway, but we will try and keep, I'll try and keep you informed as to what we're doing with flood protection. If it were to go anywhere above north of 20, we would be putting in the temporary barriers in the wall. We haven't done any of that yet, so there's, there's a little bit of, you know, on-the-job knowledge that we'll have to pick up on quickly, but the planks are in, we have them here, excuse me, we have them here, so we'd be able to install them. But as of right now, it looks like it should be on the downward slide after 18.3, but we'll probably keep them up for some period of time until it's on its, on its well, you know, well below level of concern. But the other thing is Agency Street, actually, I think as, as this meeting is going on, the, the current traffic control at the intersection of, I think it's Plaza West, is coming down. They did their, the striping today, so the cones should be being removed from there. But before everybody gets too excited, it'll start on the east side of Roosevelt, it'll, it'll kick traffic to the outside lanes. We will be removing that median from Roosevelt to just, I hate to use business names, but just east of Walgreens or, just east of Legacy Drive. They will remove that, replace it with asphalt, and then the traffic will get kicked to the inside, and then they'll begin some widening. ITC is scheduled to come in, I think, next week sometime to try and move the power lines, and then you should see the mast arms go up for the frontage road, so we have some actual lights there, but there will be a four-way stop there. The West Burlington Agent, Agency intersection will be a little bit delayed, because Broadway is not quite completed. We will wait until that's done, so we don't have, cause too many traffic issues. But that is my update.
All right, thank you.
Just a couple of free things. Man saw, going to be installing some bike racks downtown, through over the next month or so. There's 24 spots or so marked right now, but it'll be these green bike racks, single bike racks, each one holds two bikes, those will be throughout the downtown area. Is any of those going to go in Riverfront Park? We're still working through our parks, we have 28 sub-sac parks as well, so we're looking at some locations for those. And then just a final reminder, the Bridge Race coming up May 19th. You can register online through the Facebook page, Great River Bridge Race, it's yourrace.com, or here in City Hall, have applications here available if people want to do that, but encourage people, 5K, 10K, and the Bridge Walk this year as well, and a race party is about to start, it's going on from 10:15 till about 1:00. Encourage people to, you know, attend that. I think we have 230-some registered racers.
Do you have anything?
Just a reminder to sign up for the Great River Bridge Race, there is also applications available at the Y. If you're stopping by there, they have them, and it benefits our beautiful parks, so sign up.
I don't have anything.
All right. Anything? Are you good?
Radio tomorrow, or Wednesday, I'm sorry.
Are you going to?
I can do it. I'm in there, so.
I can do it. Let me look.
You guys go ahead. Because I, I actually meant Colonial, Columbus Junction, but I thought it was important.
It's at eight.
Nine.
Ten, or nine. Nine, ten.
It's at nine.
Nine, yeah. Sorry. Nine o'clock.
I can do it.
I can, but if, if I can't, I'll call you. I'm supposed to have donuts with my daughter at school, so I didn't know what time that is, before I can commit to it.
I can do the donuts thing if you want to do the...
No, I'll go ahead.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay, that sounds good.
There is a, the chamber is going to be having a meeting, or hosting a meeting, at the library on Wednesday at 9:30, Relay of Voices, and that's an event that's going to be going up and down the river next, next year, and they're trying to do some, some planning on that this year. You're certainly all welcome to attend that and get some information in regards to what they're hoping to see accomplished as they make Burlington a part of that adventure next year. DESCOM, Des Moines County, emergency, whatever it is, I don't know. Des Moines County, emergency dispatch.
One county communications there.
Thank you. Communication Center. The director is, is resigning and taking a job in another community, so we're going to have to officially accept that resignation and begin the process of getting that position filled over, over the next few weeks. I think they're getting information together now in terms of what's, what the job, just job parameters are, probably basically going to be very similar to what it was when, when Johnny was hired three and a half years ago, and make sure we get decent information out and begin that process. Hopefully, he's done the end of...
June 1st.
June 1st. We're not going to have someone hired then, so they'll be operating under an interim director for a period of time. Legislative session did wrap up on Saturday. I would say thankfully, in terms of they did not impact backfill prior to going out a session. That was a, a very close thing, when they're having a public hearings on Thursday as some of the last action to make a decision whether to include that in their final things or not, but thankfully, they did not. That would've had a $150,000 impact immediately on this next year's operating budget, so to have that not occur is a, is a big deal and a big win for us in terms of how our operations proceed, but it is one I would anticipate will come back next legislative session as an item of discussion. In regards to Tiger Grant, it's very, it is very defined in terms of what we can use that funds on. You know, even with the road designation, we had in there identified Main Street and Jefferson Street. We talked a little bit about whether there could potentially be some crossover into Washington Street, which was on the map, but not specifically identified, and they said, no, this is, you're going to do it on the areas that are identified. Those two streets were identified specifically, and projects along the waterfront were specifically identified. It has to be on what was put in there. Now, do we have some flexibility within there? Whether a certain amount is spent on part, redoing some of the parking areas versus boat ramps or, or other pieces, components that were in that? Yeah, you can move, we can move some money around, but it has to be in that specific area. So just to make sure, clarify that we don't have the ability to talk about moving that to other areas. That's it for what I have.
All right. Anyone from the back? You guys good?
One other quick note, just on the Bridge Race. In the past, for 5K and 10K, we have finisher medals, and we've had council members hand those out in the past. If anyone's not doing the walk or run and want to help hand out finisher medals, we let me or Tabitha know.
Okay, I would, I'd do that. You can just go ahead and count me.
All right, sounds good. I'm working.
That's what I'll do.
I can't do the run anymore.
I won't do the run, and I can't do the walk.
I can hand out medals.
Yeah, yep.
The women's going to get one, so you guys hand them out, and the women will get one. Is that it?
Yep, all right. Can I get a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
So moved. Let's vote on it. Graham Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
All right, we need to get the adjourned. Can I say these chairs are better? I feel like...